I'm going to call this meeting to order if everyone would stand for the flag.
I plead with legal justice, honor, and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we would just like to thank North Abington Township for hosting us, and pay particular thank you to Gary Wilding, who's the Chairman Board of Supervisors, David Menig, who is a supervisor, Thomas Mandrake, who I believe is here, who's a su- he was here, who is a supervisor, Mary Rendell, who is the Township Secretary, and Attorney Jennifer Walsh, who is the Township Solicitor. So, thank you for everybody, to everybody for allowing us to do this here today. Next item on the agenda, reading and approval of the minutes from the meeting held on July 21st, 2001. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only.
I'm just trying to introduce myself. I'm Michelle Tierney. I'm the Region 1, Abington Heights School Board Director.
Please turn the mic.
Good day.
Is this pertaining to the agenda?
It is pertaining to your reading one of the delinquent tax.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to introduce myself. Michelle Tierney, Abington Heights, Region 1. So, this is my region. Abington Heights is very interested in seeing what the county does with the delinquent taxes, because we also do collect taxes, and we are very mindful of our delinquent taxes and understanding the price in charge of our delinquent and working with them. So, I just am here to listen to your reading and to get in more information on what the county is doing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ordinances. First reading, 21-0211, ordinance number 271.
This is the first reading of amending the ordinance of 270, establishing a tax claim bureau's fees. First reading will be filed today, August 5th, 2021. An ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, modifying, amending, ratifying, and authorizing charges, expenses, and fees associated with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes by Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau under the Municipal Claim Tax Act. The Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby ordain as follows, Section 1, Residencies, 1.1. The Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of Lackawanna County Commissioners created pursuant to 5860 dot, I'm sorry, 201 of Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law. It is responsible for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes owed to certain taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County. 1.2 pursuant to 7193.5 of the Municipal Claim Tax Act. The Pennsylvania General Assembly has permitted the tax claim bureaus of the several counties to adopt and use the procedures set forth in the MCTLA in addition to the procedures set forth in the RETSL. 1.3 Effective October 1st, 2016, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorized the tax claim bureau to utilize the procedures contained in the MCTLA through the Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 244, which is authorization and is reaffirmed herein. 1.4 The tax claim bureau and the City of Scranton are parties to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding whereby the City of Scranton has appointed the tax claim bureau to collect its delinquent real estate taxes, and the tax claim bureau has agreed to collect the City of Scranton's delinquent real estate taxes, and to file tax claim liens for delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the city pursuant to the provisions of the MCTLA through Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 269. And 1.5 Both the RETSL and the MCTLA authorize the addition of charges, expenses, and fees in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes. And Lackawanna County hereby modifies, ratifies, authorizes, and/or reauthorizes the schedule of charges, expenses, and fees herein described. Section 2, charges, fees, and, I'm sorry, charges, expenses, and fees. 2.1 Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau, its designated or successor agent, is authorized to utilize the provisions of the MCTLA in the collection of delinquent taxes. 2.1 Charges, expenses, and fees to be added, applicable during the course of collection to unpaid real estate taxes. Lackawanna County hereby modifies and/or amends Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 270 and Ordinance 244 related to the collection of charges, expenses, and fees, and hereby modifies, ratifies, approves, and/or reapproves the following fees scheduled with retroactive effect of January 1st, 2021, for the collection of unpaid real estate taxes pursuant to the provisions of the MCTLA. Interest rate pursuant to 7143 of the MCTLA. Statutory notice fee pursuant to 7106 of the MCTLA is 16 cents. Second notice of fee shifting pursuant to 7106 of the MCTLA is $1.50. Perfection and service of tax claim lien is $8. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for tax claim lien is $53. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the satisfaction of the tax claim is $10. County administrative fee not to exceed 5% of the delinquent real estate tax, including penalties and interest, and the attorney's fee not to exceed 5% of the delinquent real estate tax, including penalties and interest. Section 2, effective date 3.1. This ordinance shall take immediate retroactive effect from January 1st, 2021, following the enactment. If there's any questions, Speaker, Chief Solicitor, or Frank Reserve will speak on us.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers.
Turn the mic, please.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Essentially, this ordinance modifies two prior ordinances. Ordinance number 244, that was file number 160255, as well as ordinance number 270, file number 210057. Specifically, this ordinance in modifying ordinance number 244 from 2016 specifically modifies paragraph 9 of that ordinance, which had initially set the attorney fee at 10% or at an amount not to exceed 10%. And this ordinance, in fact, reduces that attorney fee from 10% to 5%. That ordinance was obviously adopted by a prior administration. Additionally, this ordinance also redistributes the remaining 5% from the initial 10% attorney fee as an administrative fee, which will then go and be placed in the treasurer's budget for the additional work that the treasurer's office incurred as a result of the collections under the Municipal Claim Tax Lean Act. Additionally, it also modifies ordinance number 270, 210057. That was the ordinance which had initially established the fees and the attorney fee at 10% after adopting ordinance 244, so this also modifies that accordingly. So, with the new ordinance, the attorney fee will then be set at 5% or an amount not to exceed 5%, and the administrative fee also set at 5% or an amount not to exceed 5%. There's any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
So, first of all, I appreciate everything, all the hard work you're trying to get this resolved.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner.
So, 5%, 5%. We get, the tax claim office, as I understand, gets 5% of the collected taxes already.
That's correct.
That's five.
Correct.
So, then, on top of that, then, the delinquent taxpayer is charged ultimately 10%, which five is going to the law firm, and then the other to the county.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Now, as our county compt- controller solicitor states, we, the county can only accept 5%. So, I'm seeing 15% total. And I still, I understand, I just think that the additional fees to the delinquent taxpayers of the City of Scranton is too high, it's unfair. We're treating them different than all the other residents of Lackawanna County. We don't have that in place for anybody else, if they live in North Abington, Jefferson, Clark, Sump, doesn't matter. So, I just think it's just too much money, and, and I don't know. Our comptroller says that we can only accept 5%, so, you know, his solicitor states that, so, they're my questions.
Sure, and I appreciate the questions, and I thank you for those. They're good questions, Commissioner. So, with regards to the 5% that's already collected by the tax claim bureau, that's a statutory 5% which is set under the real estate transfer, the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, which we often refer to as RETSL. With the City of Scranton properties, there's a concurrence and a confluence of two separate laws. There's the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, but there's also the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act. They are two separate acts. The reason we use those two acts specific to the City of Scranton is because the City of Scranton specifically is a Class 2A city, and the ordinance of 2016 specifically required that the Municipal Tax Claim and Lean Act be used with regards to those properties. Now, the City of Scranton can at any time choose not to use the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act, but they would have to do that by legislation, most likely by amending their Home Rule Charter. They have not done that. So, that's why we use that specific law, and that's why the liens are filed only relating to the City of Scranton properties and no other, because it's unique to the City of Scranton. With regards to the additional fee, administrative fee, the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act does allow the county to accept or to charge expenses and costs that are incurred or that are actually expended as a result of using that act. And so, what I've determined, and I think in my discussions with various elected officials, is there's value to that additional work that the treasurer's office is undertaking. There's the work that the tax claim office does, and they get their fee for that, and you're correct. That comes from the overall tax amount collected, but that's by statute. The additional 5% administrative fee that goes to the treasurer's is only collected from the delinquent taxpayer if and factors a lien filed. And there's work to that. There's work such as, once the, once the lien is filed, there are any monies that are made, I'm sorry, any monies that are collected go through the treasurer's, any monies that get paid out go through the treasurer's, any phone calls that occur as a result of those liens, if not addressed through the tax claim or addressed through the treasurer's office. So, that 5% Commissioner comes from that mentality, that there's value to that, and that 5%, I think, is consistent with at least, under RETSL, the 5% that the tax claim bureau is allowed to accept by statute. So, that's the methodology as to how we get there. You know, and as far as the attorney fee goes, you know, I understand there's many opinions on the attorney fee, and I think we've responsibly reduced that today. You know, I want to point out again, the initial 10% attorney fee was not a fee set by this administration. It was a fee set by an administration four years or five years prior. So, we're amending that to get it, I think, more in line now, which is a good thing. And we can and will have a continued discussion going forward, I'm hopeful, with the City of Scranton, because I think the one thing we all agree on is that the program is wildly successful and does very well, at least bringing dollars, delinquent tax dollars, back to the city. I hope that's responsive to your question.
I understand. I just, our tax claim office does a tremendous job without the fees for the rest of the county. So, I just, I just don't agree. I think it's just too much money.
I understand.
That's my opinion. That's where I'm going to stand.
Frank, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Maybe a more pointed clarification in regard to this revised ordinance.
Sure.
The lien that's being placed, is that only being placed on the Scranton, City of Scranton, delinquent taxes? Or is it being placed on those properties in the City of Scranton that are delinquent on their county and their school district taxes as well?
My understanding is, PJ, that it's being placed on the entirety of the delinquency, which would encompass the school and would encompass the municipal and the county tax. Because at the time that the tax or the delinquent amount is delivered to the tax claim bureau, it's delivered in its entirety. So, therefore, at that point, even without an intergovernmental agreement, right? If it was outside of the City of Scranton, and someone brought a delinquency in, we'd be taking the entirety of that delinquency and then paying it out respectively where it needed to go, to the various taxing bodies. I don't see this as any different. We have the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the City of Scranton, which is where the delinquencies derive. So, whatever amounts they bring us as part of that delinquency, PJ, which to your question, I presume encompasses the school and the county, obviously, the county tax and the city tax, and all of those go into the lien that's filed. So, it does, to your question, yes, I believe it does encompass all of the outstanding delinquencies for all of the taxing bodies.
With regard to a property within the City of Scranton?
In the City of Scranton, right.
And did, does Lackawanna County authorize, or does this authorize Lackawanna County to place that, to allow the lien to be placed?
Well, I think it does, because-
And the school district, sorry?
No, it's okay, it's okay. I think it does, PJ, because what the ordinance does, right, even going back to the 2016 ordinance, first allows or authorizes the county to use the Municipal Tax Claim and Lean Act. That's the first step. And so, once we get to that point, and okay, we're going to use that act, then this ordinance says, you know, it just modifies some of the logistics and, not procedures, but logistics fees in that relative to that act. I don't think it changes at all the amount of delinquency. If the, if the city brings us a delinquency and decides that they want to exclude the school district tax or exclude another tax, that's up to them. But if they bring us the tax as though it's a delinquency, it all goes into one lien. And I don't need, I don't believe we need separate authority between the county and a school district to do that, because it's all under the guise of the delinquency being brought to us by the City of Scranton.
Okay, and to Commissioner Chermak's point, aren't we treating residents or property holders outside, property holders inside the City of Scranton?
Right.
By filing a lien against their delinquent county taxes, aren't we treating them differently than property owners who own property outside of the City of Scranton?
We are, but we're not doing so in a disparate way. We're doing so because the City of Scranton specifically has asked us to use the Municipal Tax Claim and Lean Act. And in using that act, that act allows and authorizes the filing of liens. You really wouldn't use the Municipal Tax Claim and Lean Act if you weren't going to use or if you were not going to be filing liens. So, yes, there is a difference in how the collections are done. I don't say they're treated differently. I would say there's a difference in how the collection methods occur. But that's not a decision that's made or was made by Lackawanna County. That's a decision that was adopted by Lackawanna County at the request of the City of Scranton. So, if any other municipality or if there was a decision somewhere along the way to use the Municipal Tax Claim Lean Act elsewhere, presumably it can be used. Right now, it's only used in the City of Scranton because of their request. And it's also specific, I believe, PJ, to the fact, too, that they're a Class 2A city. They're the only Class 2A city, as I understand it, in the entire Commonwealth.
Okay, and I have one last question.
Sure, sure.
And I appreciate your help and understanding.
Yeah, appreciate your questions.
The 5% county administrative fee and the 5% attorney's fee,
Yes.
they are only charged on the City of Scranton delinquent taxes, not on the delinquent taxes for Lackawanna County or the delinquent taxes for the school district of Scranton?
Well, no, I would think, no. As the ordinance is, and as you go back, I think, to the 2016 ordinance, the entirety of the fee, both the administrative fee and the attorney fees, is charged on the entirety of the lien, including cost and interest. That's how the statute specifically works.
Okay, then I guess I have to have a follow-up question.
Sure, including penalties and interest.
Right, no, I understand that part.
Yeah, yeah.
But Attorney Joyce, and I like Attorney Joyce very much.
Okay.
I think he does a great job of what he does. But he's the guy getting the 10% or his firm is getting
Correct.
that 10%.
Correct.
I did, up until this, this revision is passed, correct?
Well, no, in fact, in May, we had the, we had the discussion in May, Attorney Joyce and I, and I think, as you're aware, and I think as, I know the commissioners are aware, this is simply seeking to memorialize, PJ, that which we've been doing since May. The initial collections really didn't start until April. So, to date, Attorney Joyce has refunded 50% of the entirety of the amount he's received under the 10%. So, in other words, he's refunded 5% for April and May. He has not received any payment for June, and of course, well, he hasn't received any payment for July.
And I apologize.
Yeah, it's okay.
I misspoke. I didn't know that he was returning half of that 10% fee.
Correct, yes.
My question is, was his 10% fee, if, if what you told me, which I believe, I recall correctly, that that 10% was charged on the delinquent county,
Mm-hmm.
the delinquent school district, and the delinquent City of Scranton taxes for properties in the City of Scranton?
Right.
Then, if he, if he returned $3 million, as a hypothetical number, or pretty close to the number, to the City of Scranton and received $300,000, then he really received more than $300,000, because he received 10% on the county delinquent taxes and the school district delinquent taxes for properties in the City of Scranton. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Well, I don't want to say you're correct or incorrect. Let me, let me maybe answer it this way. And these are, again, roundabout numbers. So, for April and May, the total 10% collected, I believe PJ was in the neighborhood of about $280,000. Of that 280, he's returned half, which is about $140. So, he's returned $140, and he's retained $140. You must keep in mind also that Attorney Joyce, when he, we entered into this professional services agreement, one of the criteria was that he was required to pay all of the costs upfront. See, in many other counties-
No, I understand that. I understand.
But let me finish, though, because this is an important concept. So, even to date, right, where he's retained $140, and he's delivered back to the county $140, he's out of pocket $190,000, because he has paid, he took out a line of credit, and he fronted the costs to pay all of the liens. That's part of the responsibility of a professional services contract. So, in that regard, in many, many other counties, the county picks up that cost and then gets, you know, reimbursed once the lien is paid. In our instance, we required, I required Attorney Joyce to do that, or I require any other attorney or any other firm to do the same thing as well. So, to date, net, he's still theoretically underwater a little bit, because he hasn't received, you know, the entirety, say, of his out-of-pocket.
And I absolutely understand that.
Sure, sure.
And I, maybe I misstate of my question. My question is that if he collected $270,000,
Right.
okay, or $280,000,
Sure.
then, then he collected $2,800,000
Correct.
for the City of Scranton.
That's correct, yes.
But what about the money that the liens collected for the county delinquent taxes and the school district delinquent taxes? That would be over and above the $2,800,000 that came into the city's coffers, correct? And, and wouldn't he have collected 10% on the county delinquent taxes?
No, no.
Well, that's what I asked earlier, and you said yes.
Well, no, PJ, I don't think you were clear earlier, because I didn't understand the question.
My apologies.
So, here's, I think, what I thought, I think I had said earlier. Because the entirety of the delinquency goes into one number, right? That number, that 10% applies to that number. So, the total amount that he's collected to date, we'll use the number 280, because it's in that range, is the entirety of the amount he's collected for the county, the city, and the school district delinquent taxes. That's the entirety of the amount.
Okay, then how, if he gets 10%
Yes.
of his $280,000, then the City of Scranton's delinquent portion is only, let's say, 50%. So, how can he return $2,800,000 to the city if the entirety included the county and the school district?
When we say it was returned, that's the entire amount that was collected in the delinquency. Barbara Lenity can probably better explain, if I understand your question, how the monies were distributed out.
All right, and I don't want to belabor any of that. I'll talk to Barb, and you and I can discuss it later.
Sure, yeah, that's my understanding.
All right, I appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, 21-0212.
This is the first reading of ordinance 272, establishing the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services. First reading will be held today, August 5th, 2021. An ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, establishing the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services, being ordained and enacted, and it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna, County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, as follows. Section 1, the establishment of a single county, Lackawanna County Department of Health pursuant to local health administration law 16PS 12001. Under the umbrella of the Lackawanna County Department of Health and Human Services, the Lackawanna County Department of Health will be responsible for foundational programs, communal disease control, prevention and health promotion, environmental health, and access to clinical preventative services. The purpose of the Department of Health is to preserve, promote, and protect the health, safety, and well-being of the people and the environment in the county. Integration with Human Services will leverage resources and partnerships to allow the county to provide physical health as a component of overall health and well-being. Section 2 of this ordinance shall take effect upon enactment. Here to speak upon that, Commissioners, is our Director of Human Services, Mr. Phil Brown.
Morning, Commissioner. This is the second substantive act in forming a Department of Health. The first was receiving a certificate of approval to proceed. Now, that granted us resources with the state in the terms of phone calls and some general technical support alone, so telling us what our responsibilities are, providing some input to our plan and things of that nature. This actually provides more detail, more support from the state. For instance, they will start allowing us to have a conversation using staff members from, say, from Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Agriculture, in addition to Department of Health, to start meeting with the various staff, so we can then determine how to best proceed in this county. So, this is, like I said, it's step two, and it's a major move forward.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
We still have to form the Board of Directors, Bill.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yes, it would also allow us to form a Board of Health. And that Board of Health then will allow us to appoint a Director of the Department of Health. Without this resolution, we can't do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, moving on to the resolutions, 21-0210, proving current payables.
Being resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 32611-8-326727, inclusive totaling $2,422,169.55. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $5,471,730.22. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have a motion to approve the current payables?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0202, entering into a co-promotion agreement. Brian?
Being resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a co-promotional agreement with the Odyssey of Pennsylvania LLC, operator WGGY, WIYK, WMQX, and WKRZ, with respect to the Lackawanna County Oktoberfest Give Back on the Mountain at the pavilion at Montage Mountain, October 16th to 17th, 2021. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, who speaks upon that, is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sackler.
Hi, Brenda.
Good morning.
Morning.
This resolution states that Lackawanna County and Odyssey Pennsylvania LLC are entering into a co-promotion agreement. Odyssey will co-promote the Lackawanna County Oktoberfest Give Back on the Mountain event taking place at the pavilion at Montage Mountain, the third week of October. This event will feature local musicians and DJs, and will also have a headliner performing. There will be local vendors, including food, beverage, and shopping, and this will be a free, family-friendly event. We will provide more information at a later date of how vendors can sign up for free to partake in the event. In addition, we will be providing vaccination incentives. To find out more information, please check back at www.lackawannacounty.org, and also look for promotional information that Odyssey will be advertising across many channels in the upcoming weeks.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0202?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Okay, Resolution 21-0203, establishing the Lackawanna County Reopening Act Grant.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby established the Lackawanna County Reopening Act Grant promoting musicians of Lackawanna County with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This grant will refund Lackawanna County musicians who were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. Subsequently, this grant will promote tourism and the safe reopening of Lackawanna County. Be it further resolved, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby direct, the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Sagno.
During the COVID-19 pandemic, local musicians were dealt a crippling blow. The economic collapse of the local live music industry affected not only the musicians themselves, but countless others, including managers, sound technicians, stage crew, lighting directors, and many more. This led to the direct result of the loss of income and devastating layoffs due to the negative economic impact of the pandemic. In an effort to effectively respond to this critical need in the safe reopening of our county, this resolution establishes the Lackawanna County Music Reopening Act Grant with American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist the local music industries in recovering from the repercussions left by the COVID-19 pandemic. These funds can be utilized to help revitalize the local live music industry, alleviate COVID-19 revenue losses, pay eligible operating expenses, assist in the safe reopening of our county, and to bring back the much-needed benefits of local music. Grant awards will be up to $25,000. To qualify, you must be a current performing musician who is located in Lackawanna County in operation as of February 15th, 2020, and have proof of financial hardship due to COVID-19. Again, to find out more, I encourage local musicians and DJs to visit www.lackawannacounty.org and to download an application. Anyone have any questions on the grant?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0203?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 21-0204, entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a renewal of the agreement with the County of Lackawanna Transit System for Medical Assistance Transportation Program for the fiscal years of 2021 through 2022, with a rate decrease of $28.62 per trip. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner to speak upon that is the Director of Communications for the County of Lackawanna Transit System, Ms. Reginald Weyman.
Hi, how are you? This is an annual agreement between Lackawanna County and COLDS for COLDS to serve as the subcontractor for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. So it's just standard procedure every year.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0204?
Motion. Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, Resolution 21-0205, accepting the quote from Eastern Time.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the fire alarm quote from Eastern Time. A coast star is bended to replace the existing system at the Lackawanna County Prison to cost $142,550, the annual inspection cost of $8,790. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner to speak upon that is the Warden of the Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Hey, Tim.
Good morning, pals, everyone. The current fire alarm system that we have is 23, 24 years old. It's very old, antiquated, and it's starting to really show its age. This is an overall upgrade to a new operating system and significantly, the annual service contract is a lot less expensive than a current one. In fact, it'll pay for the whole system in total of six years, just the savings on the annual service contract.
Does anyone have any questions for Tim? Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0205?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thanks, Tim. Resolution 21-0206, approving OIFs provider agreements.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve provider agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for the fiscal years 2021 through 2022, with the following: Adelfoi Village, Bradley Center, Children's Center for Treatment and Education, Shore Youth and Family Services, Driving Alcohol Rehabilitation Services, P.A. Child, and Presley Ridge. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners, held on Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner to speak upon that is the Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Brown.
Good morning again. These are our continuations of existing contracts, primarily for out-of-home placement resources for youth in both juvenile probation and with the Office of Youth and Family Services.
Anyone have any questions for Bill? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0206?
Motion.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Okay, Bill, you're sticking around, right?
Yep.
Resolution 21-0207, approving OIFs professional agreements.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the professional agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for fiscal years 2021 through 2022, with the following: DeSanto Barlowa, Ruth Lenahan Esquire, George Mahalshik Esquire, The Friendship House, Richard Gold LLC, Painted Acres, Penn State University, and the Pennsylvania Child Welfare. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Once again, here is Director Brown.
Okay, these contracts are for the legal representation of parents and children in dependency court. The Friendship House contract is for the Community Navigator Program, which seeks to connect people with natural sources of support in the community if they're receiving mental health services. That's 100% grant-funded. Richard Gold is helping us develop legal structures in our data sharing agreements. So we are trying to coordinate data throughout Human Services, but obviously, we need a legal expertise in that area. Painted Acres helps us support the Stable Program. Penn State University is for the Prospera Program, which is a parent and a child interaction program that is evidence-based and been sustained for about 15 years or so. And Pennsylvania Child Welfare is just a data-sharing agreement with the state.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0207?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Resolution 21-0208, approving a detention services agreement.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve a detention services agreement for the Office of Youth and Family Services for the fiscal years of 2021 through 2022, with the County of Northampton. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Finally, once again, here is Director Brown.
This allows us to purchase both beds and services from the Detention Center in in Northampton. The assessments are conducted within the center. There are various metrics such as mental health assessments, et cetera.
Anyone have any questions for Bill? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0208?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0213, approving an amendment to a fireworks agreement.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into the first amendment to the fireworks agreement between community development properties Scranton to allow international fireworks to use the rooftop of the Electric City parking garage located 300 Screw Street on Saturday, August 7th, 2021. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Frank Mazzardo.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. Good morning again. This is just simply an amendment to the existing fireworks contract that was entered into on June 16th. The initial scheduled date was July 2nd, but unfortunately, that had to be postponed due to weather. So the amendment just rescheduled the event for this Saturday, August 7th, 2021. The agreement and contract's been executed by all of the respective parties. Any questions?
Commissioners, this is for the Jazz Festival. Obviously, what, as Attorney Mazzardo said, we had that for First Friday on July 2nd, and we had to cancel due to that weather. So we rescheduled it for the first opportunity, which was the Saturday for the Jazz Festival.
Okay. And this is put on to our County Department Arts and Culture and Ms. Maureen McGolden. So, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0213?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Resolution 21-0214, appointments to the Health and Welfare Authority.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following appointments to the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Attorney John Appleton, 345 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, PA, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Ronnie Lopez, 422 Powell Avenue, Department 2 Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Timothy O'Brien, 101 North Lakewood Street, Delmore, Pennsylvania, to fill the unexpired term of James Ross, which expires on December 31st, 2021. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 5th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0214?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Aye. Motions. 21-0209, this is a motion to provide notice of termination for this December 2nd, 2020 intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County in accordance with Section 5 of the agreement effective retroactively back to our last board meeting on July 21st, 2021. Do I have a second? On this motion?
Do I want to speak on that one?
You want to speak on it now or on the question?
You need a second and then we'll go on the questions.
Okay.
On the question?
On the question?
So this motion, Commissioners, just simply, or simply seeks to formally terminate or provide notice of termination through official governmental action from your action already undertaken on July 21st. You are not required to necessarily take this action at this time. What the contract provided, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, specifically under Section 5, was that any party could terminate the agreement upon 60 days' advanced written notice. That advanced written notice was provided to the city of Scranton by myself on July 21st of 2021. I know there's been some inquiry with regards to whether or not there had to be a vote on that particular day. There clearly did not. However, in the interest of not creating any ambiguity or bringing attention really to an issue which is a non-issue, I'm recommending that the board take the action per the motion at this particular time and move forward retroactively to your decision back on July 21st of 2021. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed due to, I have no problem with the agreement. It's strictly the fees.
Okay. Moving on. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Do I want me to take a recess? Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business.
Madam Commissioner, if I may, for one minute, just talk about the rate of vaccinations in our county. Currently, our overall number is at, when you look from 12 years up, is at 69%. 18-year-olds are at 71%. And 65-year-olds and above are at 90%. All fully vaccinated. I think there's been questions in the last day or two as to where Lackawanna County stands as far as its rate of transmission. We are currently still in the yellow with moderate transmissions. We are surrounded by our sister counties, who are all in substantial, I believe. The reason for that solely depends upon, or relies upon, the fact that we are at 70% fully vaccinated with our numbers continuing to rise. Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Okay, I would like to just note that our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Jason Kavulich, he was awarded the Friend of Government Award, and he was honored this past Tuesday night at the annual CCAP Conference for his role in Lackawanna County's COVID-19 testing and vaccination program. He is the first person in Lackawanna County to receive this distinction. Jason started his first clinic, the Vaccination Clinic, this January, and since then has helped and assisted with over 45 clinics. So we are very proud to have him as our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, and we just want to congratulate him. Does anyone else want to say anything on that? Brian?
Well, Madam Commissioner, I just believe that the reason that our county is doing so well in vaccines is because of Jason and his partnerships. Ultimately, it comes down to our residents who took, takes, and still continues to take this virus very seriously and are getting their vaccines on a daily basis. I believe because of the residents and because of Jason and the provider network, that's why we're still in the yellow. Only time will tell if the Delta variant comes to Lackawanna County and they surge like it's doing with the other counties. And we will make policy decisions when that happens going forward. Thank you.
And as somebody who watched this whole thing unfold, obviously, from the front seat, Jason, a lot of county employees helped, and a lot of departments, and Chief Jeffers was instrumental, but Jason really did a great job, and we just want to congratulate him and thank him for his dedication. Chris Givenin.
Well, I concur with that. Jason did just a phenomenal job, and not only am I proud, but the entire county should be very proud of what Jason has done. The guy works 24/7. And really, really guided us through this, so, and same with Brian. Brian did a great job as well, so appreciate that.
Yes, I know we're all patting each other on the shoulders, but the Commissioners allowed Jason to get this done. You gave him-
Let people do their work.
Right.
Absolutely. The only other comments I have, you know, we're going backwards here. All my, all my comments right now have to do with with email questions that are coming to these meetings. A couple weeks ago, we, there were some that weren't read due to technical difficulties, but you know, we're still in a pandemic. We're still limiting people in the building, in our county building, on how they can attend. You know, there's the Delta variant, which is still around, or is around. We're still under a federal state of emergency. And I think we should still be allowing us to accept and read anybody's emails that they send in to the Commissioners, so I think that should be reinstated. I don't think we should vary from that. We still take emails to the planning commission, the prison board, the land bank, and we'll still allow email questions for that. There's not always a question, but sometimes there is. So I don't want to censor people or not allow them to speak their mind or have a question, and if they're not comfortable attending the meetings, they should be able to send them in. You know, sometimes they're tough questions to the Commissioners, but that's the way it goes. If somebody asks me a tough question, I'm going to answer it to the best of my ability. So for now, if we're not going to accept them, I'll just put it out there. Send them to shermaxy@lackawannacounty.org. I'll be happy to use my time at the end, and I'll read any email questions that the public has, so that's, they're my comments.
All right, well, my comment is, number one, we're not not accepting, that's a double negative, but we're not refusing to accept emails, or not accepting emails because there's tough questions. We accepted emails during the pandemic because we were operating via remote Zoom. We're in person now. Never, I believe, in the history of in-person hearings, I mean, obviously, there wasn't a pandemic, but did they ever accept emails? And although we are limiting capacity, it's my understanding that we've never exceeded that, so I I don't believe that anybody's been deprived of their opportunity to come and address their issues with all three of us. But we will certainly take it under advisement and we'll discuss it, and we'll go from there. Anything else?
Madam Commissioner, before we adjourn real quick, I just want everyone in the public to know that we have still been in contact with the city of Scranton about the liens and planning on continuing to talk with them. We've had several, we've had one discussion, a sit-down discussion. We've had several, we've had one discussion, a sit-down discussion, and we've had several emails going back and forth between the attorneys. We're hoping that we can come to a compromise and work this thing out, especially going into twenty twenty-two, because as Attorney Mazzardo said, the program is very effective. It's very, very effective, and it works. There are twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy, seventy-one property taxes, properties on the tax roll of the city of Scranton, and there are, you know, twenty-nine hundred and thirty-two people that didn't pay the taxes. So, you do the numbers on that, that's ten percent, ten point three percent, really, of individuals that did not pay the taxes and were delinquent. So, eighty-nine point seven percent of the city of Scranton's residents are paying one hundred percent of the taxes. We firmly believe what we're doing is correct. We'll figure out going forward with the city if they're still interested in doing this for twenty twenty-two, and if we can come to some type of agreement, just so everybody knows that we're still talking with them, okay?
Yeah, and don't forget that prior to us collecting them, it was done by a private company that charged considerably more and was far less successful. So, it's not as if this is new. These people are habitual non-payers of their taxes. Ninety percent of the people pay their taxes on time. It's not fair to them to let the ten percent get away with it, and that's the bottom line. Okay, on that notion, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I don't know what I could say. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Right. We have to correct it. Yeah. That's what we have to do. Yeah.